This meeting is being recorded.
Chief, will you lead us in the back salute please?
Yes, Mayor Long. Ready pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please Buffy.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Trent.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here. Thank you. We have some proclamations tonight. I'm going to read the first one for domestic and intimate partner violence awareness month. Whereas domestic and intimate partner violence remains a serious social issue across all economic, ethnic, sexual preference age categories. And whereas domestic and intimate partner violence violates an individual dignity, security, and humanity with the systematic use of control through physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic abuse. Its victims can face life-threatening injuries, emotional challenges, and death. And whereas children who witness domestic violence are at a greater risk of lifelong behavioral problems, alcohol and drug abuse, and of becoming abusers and victims in their adult intimate relationships. And whereas in nineteen seventy-seven, a group of local women started Humboldt Domestic Violence Services to provide lifesaving emergency services to battered women and their children, and to develop public policy around domestic and intimate partner violence as well as human trafficking. And whereas through public education and outreach programs, HDVS enlists the diverse array of allies, agencies, and communities in changing the mindset that domestic and intimate partner violence and human trafficking are acceptable. Only together as a community can we change the cultural norms that perpetuate human trafficking, domestic and intimate partner violence, and the stigma attached to its survivors. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Fortuna recognizes October twenty twenty-one as Domestic and Intimate Partner Violence Awareness Month. The City Council celebrates HDVS's upcoming forty-five years of effort to improve community safety by breaking the cycle of domestic and intimate partner violence. Signed this fourth day of October by Mayor Su Long. And we have someone here to accept us. I think it's Suzie Frizzo. Is that right? Nope, you're the next one. Who's who's accepting this one?
We should have Katie Garrison.
Katie, are you here? It's on.
Told her a moment ago.
Um, it looks like she's unmuted, but we can't hear you Katie. Uh, we're still not being able to hear you.
Now you're on mute.
We're not getting any audio from you. Looks like she mouthed, thank you.
Sorry Katie, we would have let you say a few words, but um, sorry about that. All right, our next one is National Long Term Care Residents Rights Month proclamation, and this one is for Suzie Frizzo, and Mike Johnson's agreed to read this for me.
Thank you. National Long Term Care Resident Rights Month reclaiming my rights, my home, and my life. Whereas there are one point three million individuals living in fifteen thousand nursing homes and over eight hundred thousand individuals living in twenty-eight thousand nine hundred assisted living and residential care facilities in the U.S. And whereas the Federal Nursing Home Reform Act of nineteen eighty-seven guaranteed residents their individual rights in order to promote and maintain their dignity and autonomy. And whereas all residents should be aware of their rights so they may be empowered to live with dignity and self-determination. And whereas we wish to honor and celebrate these citizens to recognize duality and to reaffirm their right to vote and participate politically, including the right to have a say in their care. And whereas individuals and groups across the country will be celebrating Residents Rights Month with the theme reclaiming my rights, my home, my life, to highlight the need for residents' rights to be recognized, recovered, and reasserted. The theme emphasizes the recognition of a long-term care facility as the resident's home and the importance of residents reclaiming their own lives. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Fortuna recognizes October twenty twenty-one as National Long Term Care Residents Rights Month and encourages all citizens to join these important observances. Signed this fourth day of October twenty twenty-one at the City of Fortuna, State of California. Su Long, Mayor, City of Fortuna.
Thank you, Mike. Suzie, did you want to say a few words?
Uh, Mayor Long and council folks, I just want on behalf of the seniors that we serve, thank you all for recognizing this. I'm not sure if you saw the most recent article in the Lost Coast Outpost or Lost Coast Journal regarding the owner of our local nursing facilities. They need us in these buildings regularly. Um, so I really, really appreciate you all honoring us and respecting their rights and helping us continue to let them know that just because they're in a nursing home, they haven't lost their rights as individuals. We fight for them every day. And I also want to say thank you to the council member for letting me put lipstick on after eighteen months. Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome. All right, moving on to introduction of the new conference center coordinator.
Yes, can you hear us okay?
We can.
Okay, um, well, I'm very happy to introduce that I finally have a new conference center coordinator. Uh, her name is Lisa Houseworth, and she comes to us from working for years in a medical office and having her own daycare as well. Um, she grew up in our community and I think she's pretty excited to be here. Um, I know that I'm excited to have her. She has already contributed some of her great organizational skills to, um, a little bit of a mess here at the River Lodge, so it's been really nice. And um, I think that Lisa would like to say a couple of words, so. I'll give her a talk now.
Thank you, Jennifer. Um, it's really nice to meet most of you I met the other day when you were here, but I'm super excited to be at the River Lodge. It's an opportunity to work for the city and I appreciate it very much. Uh, most of my family, um, has lived here their entire life, worked here, I have, born and raised. And we're deeply rooted in Fortuna, and so I'm super proud to say that I'm part of the city now, so that's really exciting and I appreciate that.
Well, welcome Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, our next one is introduction of the new police dispatcher.
Yes, thank you Mayor Long, good evening honorable city council. It is my distinct pleasure tonight to introduce our newest public safety dispatcher Madison Bado. Madison prefers to go by the name Maddie, and she comes to us from Ferndale. She actually graduated from high school in June. Uh, Maddie played soccer for twelve years and basketball for five, and she comes from a family that is no stranger to public safety. Her dad is a firefighter and her mom is a registered nurse in the emergency room. Maddie has three siblings, an older brother and a younger brother and sister. And her favorite thing to do in her spare time is play with her new puppy Murphy. Murphy is a golden retriever, borty collie mix, and she very much enjoys the outdoors. She is very excited uh, to pursue her career here as a Fortuna Police Dispatcher. And we are absolutely ecstatic to welcome Maddie to the Fortuna family. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Maddie who's on Lieutenant Eberhart's login screen and let her say a few short remarks to the council and community.
Hi, I'm Maddie and I'm very excited to be here and um, can't wait to see what's to come and all the opportunities that are going to be given to me through this job. And I just want to thank everybody for allowing me to be here.
Thank you Maddie. Welcome to Fortuna.
Thank you.
Always oral comments from the public. We'll open that while we talk about the consent calendar, so if anyone from the public has any comments, if you are on our feed, raise your hand with the hand raising thing, and if you are not on our feed, there's a number on the screen that you can call. Um, and council, we have three items on the consent calendar, city council minutes, report of dispersments, and approval of a contract with apply a line for minor street striping. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
I wish to pull B.
Anyone else? Okay, Tammy?
Um, is Erin on?
Yes.
Okay, um, Erin, I just had a couple of questions. I usually call you beforehand, but I didn't have a chance. On dispersments, I noticed that there's a lot of repeats, like on suddenly gets on there four times and blue book, those are just a couple of examples are on there three times. Are those different accounts? Do we order safety gloves um, three different times in the same day? Or are those, um?
Yeah, so what that is, is unfortunately, uh, the way that this report comes out is it's broken out by our general ledger account numbers, so when you see multiple different uh, lines for the same vendor, that means that they're probably going to multiple account numbers, so it may be split between, say, the water department and the wastewater department, you'll see it on there twice. Um, it's it's not multiple different items.
It's the exact same numbers, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, so the the payment number is the same and that's the that's like the check number, but then the actual general ledger account number is is what is different, and that's why it's split out into multiple lines. And that that is not shown on this particular report, unfortunately, but um, that's why it's split out between multiple lines.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was just got put on there three times or if it was actually three different accounts. So, thank you.
All right, with that, does somebody want to make a motion?
No, yet, yep, hold on. Um, a while back, it was mentioned that the numbers were unreadable and um, my numbers are totally unreadable, so to go through the um, individual pages, I I can't read any of them, so I'm not sure if it was corrected, but now it's not.
So that's weird because I read mine over the weekend on my iPad, and on iPad, the numbers are not there, but on my computer, the numbers are there. So I don't know what the missing link is, but there is something.
I'm I'm looking at my tablet, so that's, it's gotta be something with the tablet then.
Yeah.
I tried it on my MacBook and my iPad, and it was unreadable, so I thought, well, I'll try it on my Android tablet. And it was also unreadable on that. And then I didn't have time to sneak my wife's uh, Windows computer out and try it, but I'm wondering if it's just from downloading it from the website because it's in two different computer languages, not just one, so I just don't know.
Well, we'll have um, our our techie people check that out because it happened to me as well, so we'll add that to our list of things for them to do.
Thanks.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right.
Motion to approve consent calendar items A through C.
Second.
We have a motion in a second Buffy.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes. So I don't see any raised hands. Do we have any phone calls Buffy? For oral comments?
No, not at this time.
Okay, so we will close oral comments from the public and move on to our city council business. The first one is approve the revisions to the purchasing procedures section of the City of Fortuna's Administrative Policies and Procedures, Procedures Manual, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one. Staff report please.
Yeah, our finance director Erin Fumley prepared the updates, modifications, and will be presenting this report.
Yes, thank you, and uh, good evening honorable mayor and city council. So I have just a short uh, presentation here to go through that'll highlight the changes, so I'm just kind of diving right into it, the background, so uh, procurement involves the process of selecting and vetting vendors, establishing payment terms, strategically negotiating contracts, and the actual purchase of goods. Procurement uh, is concerned with acquiring all goods, services, and work vital to the city. The city procurement actions are governed by state and federal laws, the Fortuna Municipal Code, and the purchasing policies policies as established by the city council. Uh, the last time the City of Fortuna adopted its most recent version of the purchasing policy was back in June of twenty eighteen, so a few years ago. Um, and it's generally good practice to review and revise our city administrative policies on a recurring basis. And so that's what we did here, um, and and we took a look at our purchasing policy, which is policy number four point two within our admin policies and procedures manual. Um, and as part of that periodic review, we had staff identified um, that the current purchasing policies and procedures would benefit from an update to reflect the higher cost of goods um, and services and reflect the procedures uh, that are currently followed by the city. I'm going to highlight what those proposed changes are that staff is recommending. Um, and the first one here is to increase the purchasing approval limits um, for supervisors. That would increase from five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. For department heads, that would increase from twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollars. And then for the city manager, it would increase from ten thousand to thirty thousand dollars, except for services. Um, and that's because services is specifically outlined in the Fortuna Municipal Code, and so that would remain at ten thousand dollars. Um, the second change that staff is proposing um, is to do with our comparative cost, uh, and the comparative cost uh, sheet that we require be included as part of a check request or a purchase order. Um, and so we were, we're recommending that that threshold um, increased from five hundred dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, we would also change the wording from single item to include single item or the bulk purchase of a single item, so if somebody was getting uh, say a hundred of something and they were all uh, fifty dollars, we would want um, a comparative cost form to be filled out for that, for those items. And then we want to increase the number of required vendors from two to three vendors, um, just so we make sure we're getting uh, as you know, more um, quotes as we can, the better we've seen defined, so we're going to increase that from two to three. And then the final proposed changes is to align the definition of who a supervisor is um, to our current city org chart, and so that uh, entails removing the mechanic, assistant city engineer, and planner from the supervisor list and adding the chief treatment plant operator, city engineer, and river lodge manager um, to the supervisor list. And so as far as the financial impact is concerned, um, streamlining the city's purchasing policy procedures where possible and practical will result in increased efficiency in department operations to reduce impacts on staff time uh, to procure goods and services now. Um, department heads are still going to be required uh, or recommended to go ahead and go out and get multiple quotes. But what this will do is eliminate them having to fill out the form and turn that in um, for finance to review, for us to review, and then um, include with the purchase order. Um, so with that, staff's recommendation is to approve the revision to the purchasing procedures section of the City of Fortuna's Administrative Policies and Procedures Manual and adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
All right, thank you Erin. Let's open public comment while the council's discussing this. Um, Erin, could you? You just did, stop sharing your, stop sharing your screen so I can see people. Thank you. All right, council, do you have any comments or questions for Erin or Merritt?
I have a question. Um, for on the increases, the those still have to stay within their budgets, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, so um, no matter what, uh, the department is required to stay within their budget, or in the case of capital outlay items, we we try and list them out in the budget, so you'll see like an actual, you know, Ford F-150 or a tractor. They have to stay to whatever is listed in the budget, and if they go outside of that, then the council would have to approve it, no matter if it's one dollar or five thousand dollars or twenty thousand dollars or more.
Okay, that kind of explains my next question. I was curious about going from ten thousand to thirty thousand, what would be thirty thousand within the budget, but what you just said, like if it was a vehicle that's in the capital, that that would?
Yeah, that would primarily be capital outlay items, and um, those have to be specifically outlined in the budget, so that would entail those types of items.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick comment. Um, Erin, I really appreciated the red line version as well as the draft version. Um, so we could make a comparison with both of those, so thank you for doing that.
Anyone else? Any calls from the public Buffy?
No.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Back to the council.
I'll move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one and read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, Buffy.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna approving the purchasing procedures for inclusion in the City of Fortuna's Administrative Policies and Procedures Manual. Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Trent.
Yes.
Mayor Long.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to um, item B authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the existing agreement with PG&E for the use of the Fireman's Pavilion during a national natural disaster.
Thanks Mayor Long, um, Cameron Mole has a staff report, and we were pleased that PG&E wanted to expand their scope and to provide assistance during emergencies other than a PSPS, and I appreciate Cameron working on this and getting this agreement done. And our city attorney Ryan Plots actually brought us an amendment instead of a whole new contract, which was originally suggested, so it streamlined with the council letter review. So with that, turn it over to Cameron.
Thank you Merritt, good evening mayor and city council. Hopefully everybody can hear me and see me okay. Uh, so uh, the city currently has an existing agreement, just to give a little background uh, and summary on my staff report. We currently have an existing agreement with PG&E that we established last year, June of twenty twenty to utilize the Fireman's Pavilion and general outlying area uh, in case of a PSPS event. However, now we know that, you know, we're on the Humboldt Bay Power Grid and PSS events are not very likely in our county. Um, however, we will continue over the next five years in case the power does go out, the PG&E did install an automatic transfer switch and generator at the site. So we will have power at the site if power does go out. Um, so however, PG&E reached out to me and requested a potential addendum to the existing agreement um, to add emergency uh, services to the community if there was a type of uh, emergency declared by OES or a natural disaster. Um, luckily PG&E and uh, the American Red Cross, we also have a similar existing agreement to utilize the pavilion in case of a natural disaster. They would work in conjunction with each other. Um, so more than likely if there was a a natural disaster event or emergency event and both the Red Cross and PG&E were needed, then uh, Red Cross would be inside providing the shelter services, and then PG&E would be outside providing any services related to that natural disaster. So they are fine working uh, in a partnership with each other to serve our community in case of a large uh, uh, natural disaster or event. Um, so this doesn't change the current agreement, the current agreement would still expire June twenty twenty-five. Um, and uh, does allow us a little bit of revenue as well, so even though they might not be using the inside of the Fireman's Pavilion uh, facility in case of an emergency, and they're just set up outside, they'd still pay the city five hundred fifty dollars per day of use of the outdoors and provide services to the community, so a pretty good deal. Uh, and yes, Merritt's correct in that Ryan Plots, our city attorney, has already reviewed the addendum, which is just a one pager. Um, as Merritt stated originally, they wanted to redo the entire agreement, but it made it a lot easier to just add the one-page addendum to the existing agreement. So we would just have to sign that. Um, examples of um, emergency events would be uh, include but not limited to a significant earthquake, wildland fire, major heat event or winter storm requiring a warning or cooling center, wind event of over forty miles per hour, major gas leak or gas-related fire, cyber incident that slows system response times, uh, et cetera, so um, covers quite the gamut. So I don't really see, um, you know, besides some utility costs that would be incurred during an emergency event and use of the facilities, I don't see any downside to um, having the city manager pass this addendum to the agreement. So at this time, I'm happy to uh, take any questions if there are any.
All right, well, does anyone from the council have any questions?
I do. Um, Cameron, looking down at the license agreement, um, bring your attention to number two, use of license area and interior common areas of the property. You know, um, the PSPS, um, when you say not likely in our county, as I understand the Humboldt Bay Power Plant, there in, there would be supplying power to mostly the Fortuna, Eureka, Arcata, McKinleyville area in the event SPS, and the outlying areas would be pretty much uh, affected by that shut off. Um, with regard to number two, and I know that this was passed last year, but in looking at um, number two, it says, um, yeah, let's see. During use, during use days, and in number five, I believe use days is described. Um, it says PG&E and PG&E representatives and customers shall have the exclusive right to use the license area as a customer resource center. And then moving down to number five, it talks about what use days are, but it also again makes the statement that uh, PG&E the representatives and customers would have exclusive use of um, of basically the pavilion, and it goes into what that use would be. Wondering if we need to make some adjustment with that in the event that we have uh, fire refugees, um, fire people that are escaping from a fire situation coming to the pavilion under the Red Cross auspices. Um, and and wondering if that is going to be a conflict then, and and I understand that there would be cooperation there, but in wording alone, um, a conflict since PG&E has exclusive rights over the pavilion at that time.
That's correct, uh, but you're right in that I think that's only for a PSPS event, so this addendum is not related to any PSPS events. But that is a good point, and that's something that I can clarify, and we can re-review the contract and see if we need to make further amendments in that regard or add anything to the addendum. But I think as far as the original contract goes, that's related to only PSPS events. Um, and so in that sense, may not affect uh, the facility if there is power, uh, but there is a natural disaster and both entities can be on site.
Okay, it's just a matter of wording and the exclusivity of um, you know, of PG&E's um, being there.
Uh huh.
Um, it might be something Ryan might want to take a look at. I'm certainly, I don't, I don't know, it might be something he wants to look at. And then on that same agreement under number six, um, this is upon execution of this license agreement, PG&E shall pay to the licensor the sum of three thousand dollars, and in parentheses, it's actually four thousand. So that
Yeah.
To be cleaned up.
Yeah, I do apologize for that. I remember catching that, and I believe it was uh, Merritt, you might recall, that was when we executed this last year, they gave us basically, it's like a signing bonus. And I can't recall if it was three or four thousand, but uh,
Okay, just, however, that gets cleaned up, but I I like the uh, idea of this license agreement. Um, and as long as PG&E and the Red Cross or any other FEMA or any other groups that need to use the pavilion can use them. Um, hey, that's great.
Thank you, Mike, yeah.
So I'm not thinking that needs to be changed because it clearly stated the PS, what do you call it? The planned powers, public safety power shut off. If that happened and PG&E was there, the Red Cross is most likely not going to be there because it's not a natural disaster. That's how I read it.
However, the Red Cross could be there like this last incident with um, that being a Red Cross shelter very well could have been a PSPS at the same time, uh, including areas that are outlying in our county that aren't covered by the Humboldt Bay Power Plant.
Any other comments or questions from council? Anybody call in Buffy?
No.
And no one's got their hand raised. So what does the council want to do?
Mayor Long, I just, can I make one comment? I think in the agreement that PG&E gets priority that they would be paying the bill, but it's hard for me to see them turning away anybody or seeing a joint response. So you know, because their contract does have the priority of use, I think they would supersede the Red Cross. So but it's hard to envision a situation where, you know, we have either a emergency aid station or the Red Cross. I think we would be able to work out the details in any event.
I agree. I think it's just a matter of wording in the agreement and Ryan could probably take a look at that. But I'll go ahead and move to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the existing agreement with PG&E for the use of the fireman's pavilion in Runner Park during an emergency event to provide support services to the public.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I can't remember if I closed public comment. If I didn't, I'm closing it now. Buffy, if you'll read that and take the vote, please.
Council member Johnson?
Yes.
Council member Losi?
Yes.
Council member Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you. Moving on to number C or item C, consider adopting resolution number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two. A resolution making findings pursuant to government code section five four nine five three as amended by Assembly Bill three sixty-one and authorizing the continued use of virtual meetings. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Long. Seon Emmons, our city clerk is out on vacation this week, so I'll be providing a staff report. It'll be pretty brief, but the general recommendation is that the council adopt resolution two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-two and make the findings pursuant to government code section five nine four five three as amended by Assembly Bill three sixty-one. And really the purpose is just to make those findings so the city council and the other city boards can continue to meet by teleconference. So there are specific set of guidelines of when this will apply and when teleconference meetings can be held. There's a history in the staff report of the different legislation modifying the Brown Act and the history as well as the different protective measures the city is taking. In as far as the fiscal impact, the city is taking the steps necessary to council authorize the budget to retrofit City Hall to be able to better accommodate hybrid meetings. So we're working on those things and this resolution will keep us in compliance with the new assembly bill.
All right, thank you, Merritt. We'll open public comment. Does council have any comments or questions? No phone calls Buffy?
No phone calls.
No hands raised on this end. All right, we'll close public comment. I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two. Read by title only.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second Buffy?
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two, a resolution of the city council of the City of Fortuna making findings pursuant to government code section five four nine five three as amended by Assembly Bill three sixty-one and authorizing the continued use of virtual meetings. Council member Johnson?
Yes.
Council member Losi?
Yes.
Council member Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you Buffy. Moving on to city manager's report. Merritt?
Thank you, Mayor Long. First, I'd like to review the upcoming meeting schedule. Our next council meeting will be on Monday, October eighteenth at six o'clock PM. Our next planning commission meeting will be on October twelfth, also at six o'clock PM. Our next measure E meeting will be on December twenty-first. And that'll be at five thirty PM. And our next Runner Community Recreation and Park District meeting will be this Wednesday, October sixth at two thirty PM, also be a teleconference. I just have a few items to report on for my verbal report. The first one is the city's grant to Headwaters for planning funds to augment the city's mill site specific plan was accepted. So it was a top ranked project and there it was unanimous. So the city will be once the board of supervisors approves the, the list of projects, the city will be receiving seventy-five thousand dollars from the Headwaters Fund. Really, our goal is to have more robust public outreach to develop a slate of options for the mill site that a developer could look at and how it could be developed and also to do some of the engineering work to better determine the improvements and to complete sequence. So it's a great augment to the lead grant that the city received, which is really focused at housing and allow us to move forward and have a much more robust process and evaluate those different options for the mill site. So I'm really excited about that. It was a pleasure to be able to present to the Headwaters Board and I'll share with the council at our next planning priorities meeting. A quick just replay of the presentation that we made to the Headwaters Board and share that vision. We also, you may have seen in the press this week, we did have a release of the Bird scooters. We were pleased to have council member Johnson be our spoke model for that. It's, there are some interesting comments in some of the different news blogs, but we're going to give it a try. It seems like a fun thing for the community. We have a relatively short contract period, which is just a trial period until the end of the year. And then I imagine if Bird thinks Fortuna will be successful, they'll, they'll bring a request. And so we have a little bit of time between now and into the year to evaluate how this is going, if it's something we want to continue. So we're not committed for life and if any of the council members have comments, please let me know. And thanks again, council member Johnson for helping with that press release. And then I've been meeting with Fbid, the Fbid executive director and president. So Buffy will, our city clerk Buffy will be seeking to schedule a workshop. We were targeting the end of November or the beginning, excuse me, the end of October, the beginning of November, really to bring back, I will be bringing back the different options that the council requested that I analyzed as well as continuing Fbid under its current direction that they're, they're heading. So I look forward to bringing that back to the council. And I just wanted to let the council know I will be off on vacation from October tenth through the nineteenth. And while I'm gone, our finance director Erin Family will be acting city manager and our, our city engineer Brendan Bird will be the acting public works director. So if you need anything, get ahold of me this week and I'll be gone starting on Sunday. That's all I have for my report.
All right, any questions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Planning priorities meeting, is that still on the twenty-first?
Yes.
Okay. And then how many Bird scooters did we get?
You know, I didn't get the exact number and I know they were targeting around seventy-five and I've actually heard that more people want to find them and can't find them than there's enough. So I know they were having a little trouble getting them. That's what took a little bit longer. And so I know they're going to be adding more as they can. And just looking at those scooters, it seems like they probably pulled them from somewhere else. They were, certainly weren't brand new. Looks like they've been on the road for a little while. So I think they're moving them around from one community to another. And I don't know the exact number, but I could find out if you'd like me to.
No, I was just interested. I had heard the same thing that there were people looking for them and couldn't find them.
And you can log on to the app if you download the app and you can see where they're located. So and I think that only gives you the available ones, but that will give you a pretty good sense of how many there are if you, if you do download the app and log on.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Merritt? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to future agenda items. Do we have enough on our list? Somebody's knocking on my door. Only when I'm in meetings. All right, no future agenda items. We'll move on to city council reports. Mike Johnson. The Bird writers.
Yes, that was me. I will say that they are easy to ride, easy to, once you figure out the procedure, easy to take off on and start. And they are a good means of transportation to fill that last mile capability. And our ideal thing would be they start the morning in and around transit stops. But they're liable to be anywhere after twelve, maybe even after eleven. But that was great. And thank you Merritt for allowing me to participate in that. The other thing today, got to listen to an awesome presentation from our police chief. And I won't say a lot about it because I'm sure there's a few others that would like to make comments and but it was great to see a layout of what's gone on since he's been our chief. The steps he's taken to comply with the new regulations the state's throwing at us. And the direction things are heading in and it all looks positive. So thank you Chief Day for the things that you do. And I will turn it over to the other Mike, Mr. Losi.
Thank you, Mike Day, Mike Losi, Mike L.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have a lot to report, although I absolutely concur and agree with what Mike said about our chief. There are so many good things and positive things that are happening with our police department, including the second K-9 that we're getting, K-9 Blitz. So that's going to be great. I did have a RCEA meeting that was scheduled on the twenty-first. I had planned on making that meeting, but I was out of town and something came up. I couldn't make it. And it precluded me from getting ahold of, I think it's Mike Johnson, who's my stand-in. But at any rate, and then we have not had a Laughco meeting since the last time I reported. So mine's short.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Jeremy, who's out of town.
Yeah, I'm I'm zooming in from Anaheim, California for a California Association Realtors Conference, first one we've had in like twenty months.
So you're still kind of working. Thought you were having fun. Okay.
No, this is state director's business. We haven't, we haven't met in over twenty months. So in that regard, it's, it puts a smile on my face because I get to see people I haven't seen in a long time. Fbid hasn't met since the last time I reported out. Merritt kind of touched on the things that he's working on with the executive director and the president Emily Holman. Emily's putting in a lot of time and energy, so I want to give kudos to where it's due. Trying to right this ship and keep things moving in a positive direction and, and making sure all of the future Fbid goals can be met some way or another. So good job Emily. I have a meeting for Parks and Rec coming up next Monday. So I'll have more reported our next meeting. So I too have a very small report item.
All right, thanks Jeremy. Tammy?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't get to see chief's presentation this morning. I had no internet. I always kind of wonder what happened if internet went down on a Monday night that we had meeting. But besides that, I have nothing to report. So mine's even shorter.
All right, thanks Tammy. Mine is short as well. I did have a redact meeting since our last council meeting. And chief asked me to let everyone know that they have their pink patches back for October acknowledging breast cancer awareness. So he's holding up his pink and he's got a pink shirt on under his uniform and that's why. So with that, we've been working on our city manager's evaluation and renewing his contract and all of those things, which is kind of a normal thing we do in September. And that's all I've got. So if somebody wants to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor? I All right, thank you, everybody. Merritt, have a great vacation.
Thank you.